Being seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Basfus?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Collins?
Here.
Commissioner Gary?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Talantino?
Here.
Commissioner Twardy?
Here.
Okay, we're all here. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask those with cell phones if they would please put them on vibrate or shut them off. We would appreciate that. I know Mary Jo Duvall stopped in. She is the 350th Sioux Events Coordinator of all the activities with a lot of people volunteering. So before we get started on the actual agenda, I thought maybe, Mary Jo, we had a big weekend. If you'd like to just talk a little bit about that and then we got the big festival coming up this following weekend, right?
Yes, we do. Thank you for having me. Gus Mackler was just this past weekend down at City Hall. It was a great weekend. We had 117 teams participate, which brought in four members per team plus family and spectators. So it was a great weekend down here. We were about five teams short compared to last year, but with Gus Mackler hosting five tournaments throughout the state this year, every tournament this weekend was down. So they actually are going to stop doing the five tournament weekends and maybe we'll get our numbers up again from there. So we look forward to that in the future. What I did pass out to you were some pictures of five benches through a beautification grant that I assisted with Oliver on. These are what Sioux High School Welding Department has come up with. We chose some different designs to represent the Sioux area with Sioux Tribe. There's canoes, there's the International Bridge, yep, okay, the UP and then also the Edmund Fitzgerald. So right now, those benches are down at Anni Osborne Park, ready to be utilized during the festival this coming weekend, and from there, Justin will take them and put them throughout the downtown area.
Very nice.
The other document that I gave you was a list of all the different events for the 350th coming up. Those are listed on our website at www.sousetmurray.com and as well was just sent to the Evening News for them to have in the paper so every day they can keep an eye on what are the different activities are.
Mary Jo, could we put this on the screen so folks at home can see the benches?
Yes. I think they really need to come down to the festival and see them in person.
Here it comes. Just so they get an idea of what we're looking at. So they're very well done.
We will be working with Greg Rambo and getting an article together in regards to the grant and the project that the kids had in school as far as designing and producing them as well, so.
Very nice. Thank you.
And then I'm going to show you that. We just got in our 350th t-shirts. We're pretty excited about these. You'll be able to purchase them at the festival this coming weekend, and then from there, we'll see what kind of opportunities we've had. I've had a lot of people calling and asking for orders and such, so this is the new shirt.
Sponsors, great.
We have our platinum sponsors on the back. Does anybody have any questions or anything for me?
What's going on this weekend, a little bit about the festival?
We have music, food, and a beer tent all day, every day for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. The times are listed on your paper. We also are having historical booths there throughout the weekend that will have information about our town's history, the native culture. It'll talk, there's a booth there with talking about our waterways and how important they are to us and our community. We also have kids' activities throughout the weekend. Escape Your Fate, if you're familiar with our local businesses, is going to do it Sioux style. So sharpen up on your history before you get down there and check their booth out.
And the cost for the activities?
Cost for everything is $5 for 16 years and older. You'll receive a wristband, and that wristband will get you into everything all weekend long. Friday afternoon and evening, Saturday from noon to 10:00, and also on Sunday from 12:00 to 8:00. And I did want to mention on Sunday also from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., we will be hosting a Veterans Breakfast with pancakes and sausage. Cris Cakes from Downstate is coming up. You need to have your plate ready because they start flipping those flapjacks and you have to catch your pancakes. So it's kind of a fun and entertaining time. Any veteran with ADD 214 or active-duty military with a proper ID will have breakfast for free. Otherwise, it's $7.00 to the general public, and if you would like to sponsor a Veterans Breakfast, you can get ahold of us at Sioux Events and we can make that happen for you.
Great. Any questions, Mary Jo? Commissioner Baker?
Is all this information on the Sioux Events webpage, Facebook page yet, or?
Yes. You mainly will find most of it at sousetmurray.com, and then some of the individual smaller things are on Sioux Events as well, and then that will start going into the paper also.
Okay, yeah, that would be great to share on Facebook.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a proclamation and recognitions. We have the presentation of the WFG Bud Weber Award, and for that, I would ask the city manager to join me at the podium along with Bill Munzel. Good to see you, Bill.
City of Sioux State Marie appreciates those citizens who demonstrate a long-lasting commitment to the community through volunteerism. On rare occasions, the city commission honors these outstanding individuals by recognizing them for the contributions to improving the city of Sioux State Marie and inspiring community pride. The WFG Bud Weber Citizenship Award is presented to an individual who, after an extended period of time, has through sustained volunteer efforts and participation on city government boards and commissions and community organizations, made outstanding and long-lasting contributions to the community resulting in the betterment of the city of Sioux State Marie and its citizens. Bill Munzel is the 2018 recipient of the Bud Weber Citizenship Award. His contributions to our community are many. Those that know him, those of us that know him, those listed would take maybe four hours. We've listed some of those here. He's been Alliance Club member since 1971. Boy Scouts of America scout and adult leader since 1962. That's over 55 years. United Way of the Eastern Upper Peninsula Board, over 25 years. Chippewa County Emergency Food and Shelter Committee, over 10 years. Chippewa County Community Foundation Board Member. Chippewa County Employee Credit Union Board Member and Treasurer. Sioux Tribe of Chippewa Indians Higher Education Committee Board Member. Saint Mary's Catholic Church Usher Finance Committee Member. Saint Francis Catholic Church President of the Church Council, 2015 to 2018. Michigan Municipal League, he's a past board member. Superior Township Board Member. Bay Mills Tribe, he's a Spirit Stone Trail Committee Member. I-500 Snowville Race, volunteered for 50 years. Eastern UP Board of Realtors, a board member and past president. The LSSU First Director of Financial Aids from 1967 to 1998. A member of the LSSU Alumni Association and here in the city of Sioux State Marie. City Commissioner served for 28 and 1/2 years. Mayor Protem. Over 10 years. Airport Board, 2015 to the current time. Worked with Sioux Lions and City Construct Ashman Bay Boat Launch. City Project Park Committee. Worked on the Bud Weber and establishment and Bud Weber Award. In the Sioux Beautification Committee, planting flowers, citywide cleanup for many years. It's a great pleasure that we recognize Bill Munzel with the WFG Bud Weber Award.
While your honor and city commission, this was indeed a surprise. I humbly accept this award, but I want to dedicate it to the hundreds of people that give their time and their talent and their money to improving the city. I can think back at Project Pride, did a great job at the Sioux High Football Field and Athletic Field, Project Playground, and the hundreds of people that worked with Project Playground Project. In fact, there's an Eagle Scout project up there that's probably the finest Eagle Scout project I've ever seen. Matt McLeod built a pavilion, got the help together, and it's a wonderful little structure up there. And Project Park, we can't say enough for Denny Doherty and Project Park. I mean, Denny has saved the city probably a million dollars in time and monies raised. And finally, many of these things wouldn't happen without the Seal Trust Fund. Back before the Seal Trust Fund, recreation parks got a little bit of whatever is left over, but when the trust fund came in, those monies were dedicated, they must be used for improving the city parks and recreation programs, construction of new or improving existing structures. And lastly, Bud Weber. Bud was, I guess, an idol of mine in Lions Clubs. What a great man. Bud was involved for, I don't know, 40 years, 50 years in city beautification, planting trees, planting flowers. I'm sure the Garden of the Year project was something that came under his wing when he was there. But what really impressed me with Bud was that last year I was at a Lions Hall of Fame function, and Bud was recognized as a member of the Lions Michigan Hall of Fame with a couple other people. And the other people were recognized for awards they got. Well, Bud Weber has awards in his name, about three of them. So he's far above the normal guy you see on the street, but I think Bud Weber should be remembered, and I'm sure with Bud Weber Park here and Bud Weber Award, he will be remembered for a long time. So thank you very much, your honor. Thank you. Will you want me to? Come on. Just stay here.
Thank you. I really don't.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, Bill? Look. Thank you. Item number C, a public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that can make a comment on a agenda item? Would like to be recognized now, and you have three minutes during that time. Okay, now I'm going to go on to the consent agenda.
Under the consent agenda, one, approval of the city commission meeting minutes of July 2nd, 2018. Item two, approval of the Community Services Board meeting minutes of June 26, 2018. Item three, approval of the Historic Structures Management Committee meeting minutes of June 27, 2018. Item four, approval of the Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes of June 12, 2018. Item five is to confirm mayor's appointment of Rob Landis to the Economic Development Corporation for a term to expire June 1, 2024. Item six is to accept the resignations and reappointments to the Community Services Board. Item seven is designation of Officer Delegate to the Michigan Employees Retirement System Annual Meeting. Item eight is approval of animal control contract with Chippewa County. Item nine is from Chippewa County Community Foundation, authorization to sell liquor on city-owned property for the Sioux Ultimate Paddle Day on August 18, 2018, subject to the rules of the Michigan Liquor Control Commission and any rules established by the city manager. And item 10 is approval of the consent agenda items as presented.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Baker?
I just wanted to ask the city attorney, should I abstain from the vote for the Chippewa County Foundation as I am a board member?
That is correct.
So if we can remove that.
Okay, we'll take those two off of the consent agenda at this point and deal with those as a first item of business, okay? So at this time, it's through item number, consent agenda, item one through seven. Anyone that, any commissioner that likes something further explained? Is that eight, nine?
No, just nine.
Which one is it? Just number nine? Oh, just number nine, okay. So we're, one through eight on the consent agenda. Hearing on, Commissioner Twardy.
I still move that we approve the consent agenda.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Basfus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Motion carried. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Basfus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Motion carried. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Basfus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. So that first item on the business, item number nine, Chippewa County Community Foundation. It was on the consent agenda, and Commissioner Baker will abstain from any discussion or voting on this. Commissioner Twardy?
Discussion or make the motion?
You can have some discussion too.
Yeah, I wanted to have some discussion because I received a phone call last week from a local business owner who felt like he wasn't given the opportunity to at least lobby for the opportunity to have this event, and I don't think that every, I think it's okay for us to look outside our community, to look at other vendors for events, but I still think that just like any other precedence that we're setting in town, we need to be looking within our community first, allowing the local business owners to petition for the opportunity to help maintain their businesses. He's a very good taxpayer, and I also think that, you know, relationships on these committees come back to the city as a whole, because one of his questions to me was, why is the city not allowing me to petition for these events? And I said, well, it doesn't really have anything to do with the city, but they still do, and that's the thought process. So I, just moving forward, I would like for events to be considered for local businesses first, and then if they are too busy or unwilling, then look outside our community.
And that's, those are excellent points, and I think when you look at the local businesses, they're the businesses that are hit most with donations, always knocking in. We have a number of private business people here. You know that your door continues to open wide as groups and different events are here or so. It all takes volunteerism and also takes sometimes money from giving organizations and businesses, and we've had a lot of our activities in the Sioux because people have been generous. So I think it's important that we try and involve as many people as we can because that just means the success of the program. Commissioner Talantino?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the selling of liquor on city-owned property for the Sioux Ultimate Paddle Day on August 18, 2018, subject to the rules of Michigan State Liquor Control Commission and any rules established by the city manager.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Basfus?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item E, Special Orders of Business. One, approval of first resolution for public improvement, West 8th Avenue from Ryan to Meridian, Project ST-02-18.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. On this matter, I've requested that City Engineer Basista present to the commission and community.
Evening, Linda.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. As you know, West 8th Avenue is budgeted for reconstruction or road improvements this year, and so staff is working on the design for West 8th Avenue. This is being designed in-house, and like all street improvement projects, we have a special assessment process in which property owners pay a portion of the cost for street improvements. This project is for West 8th Avenue between Ryan Avenue and Meridian. It's currently about half of the road faces residential homes, the other half faces, adjoins the Malcolm Field Ball Diamonds, and it's a road with no curb and gutter, it has ditches, and the proposal for the improvements is to keep it a road with ditches, and as part of the project, we will improve the base, realign the ditches, replace driveway culverts, and we are proposing that we pave the portion that abuts the houses and gravel the portion that abuts the ball fields. There had been some discussion previously last year regarding requests to close the portion that is in front of the ball fields, much like currently 10th Avenue is closed after the homes and then the other part runs through the ball fields. And this would be, the proposal was for a similar situation. We, last year, we put out letters to the property owners. We only received two or three responses, and two were okay with it, pending some further discussion, and one was opposed. And since that time, we just proceeded with the plan to keep the road open, but make it look like a park as far as with the ball diamonds and try to slow traffic down in the park area, which is why I've proposed gravel instead of paving beyond the houses. Again, the city owns the property, and the gravel portion, abutting in the gravel portion, and there's homes abutting what is proposed to be paved. So this process, what you would be doing tonight, is passing the first resolution, setting a public hearing for the hearing of necessity. Tomorrow, letters would go out to the abutting property owners indicating the public hearing, and then also we'd be holding a public information meeting prior to the public hearing so we can answer typical residential questions prior to the public hearing. And if we move forward with the special assessment, the rest of the process is then to have a public hearing on the role in which, that would happen after bids are received. So this is planning to be bid out yet this year with the option for the contractor to give us a price to do the construction this year and for them to give us a price to do it in the spring. The reason that is being proposed is because contractors are extremely busy this year, and our one and only paving contractor is exceptionally busy this year. Besides being on the business fur, they've got a lot of other projects going on. Not a lot of large contractors are coming to town because we only have the one large project going on, and so for better pricing opportunity and giving the opportunity to see what we can get for a better price to do the project in the spring. So there's a chance it could be done this fall, chance for next spring. But what's before you tonight is the process to start the special assessment process.
Okay, thank you. Just comments I have on doing half the street. I would not favor that, and I know it's partly a cost-saving measure, but the dust that would occur because 8th Avenue, as we all know, is, 4th Avenue is such bad condition. A lot of people use 8th Avenue Easter Day to traverse to Lake State University, but with a new completed road, I would think we should do all of it since the neighbors are there, and I've seen the dust that can occur with gravel, and you can try and close it down, but I would think it'd look like half a street. And I think we owe them, at least in my mind, that we do the entire street. We're not doing curb and gutter. We're doing ditching and improving the water drainage there, so I'd like to see us do the total thing as a blacktop. Commissioner Baker?
I agree with you on one level, and on the other hand, I agree with Linda as far as the gravel with it slowing down traffic, because with how many people are up at Malcolm Park and especially young children and crossing the street and things like that, and paving that road completely, as you say, a lot of people will use it, utilize it a lot more probably than they do now because it is in such a bad condition to make their way to Lake State. So if we were to determine to pave the entire lot, I'd suggest like crosswalks, a light of some sort, a slow speed, something along those lines for that area with that high traffic of children.
And I think children, you know, children have play signs.
Yeah.
But ultimately, in the amount of work, maintenance, I can believe, on a gravel road with the amount of rain that we might get plus the amount of traffic you might get, there'll be highly, in my mind, there'll be a maintenance area that's going to be heavy, and the maintenance, making sure the gravel stays on the roadway because without curb and gutter, the road, as rain happens, it's going to run down into the ditches and stuff, so I would still, I can see that. People have to be responsible, that's a, there's a lot of children up there, even in the park area, in that whole area back in there, and it's hopefully going to get a lot busier going forward, so maybe some speed bumps that are just, something like the Mackinac Bridge, which doesn't impact you a lot, but at least it gets you worried about what you're supposed to be doing as far as speed goes, maybe something, but ultimately, I still, I still would like to see it all the way. Commissioner Twardy?
Yeah, I understand the cost savings. I completely get that. I think it's going to make it look like we ran out of pavement. It's going to go from pavement to gravel and back to pavement again, and it's just going to look incomplete, and I know that we've all been waiting for West 8th Avenue to get done because it is in desperate need, but it is still one of the main ways to get EMS vehicles through that area, I believe. Is that true? And so just them traveling at the speeds that they're going to be traveling on in that gravel, I know you're supposed to go slow on gravel, but EMS is still going to have to move at EMS pace, and it could, it's, I think it's going to be a maintenance nightmare. So I would like to see the whole entire thing paved too.
Commissioner Talantino?
I read through this entire thing. Would there be any way that we could get a sidewalk at least on the south side of that street? Because if I'm not mistaken, there's nothing at all on that street whatsoever. If there was some way we could possibly tie it in, I know we're speaking of doing ditching improvements, what have you, but if I'm not mistaken, would the south side be available for a sidewalk?
City Manager?
I would defer to the city engineer or professional.
Well, because of the ditches, no, there would not be room in the right of way for sidewalks, so we'd have to obtain easements from properties.
Any other comments? Any questions of the city engineer? City Manager?
Thank you for that presentation, Linda, and at this time, the motion as to approve the first resolution for public improvement, scheduling the public hearing of necessity for 7:00 p.m. on Monday, August 6th for the West 8th Avenue reconstruction. This is specific to the special assessment process for adjoining property owners, and certainly administration could take the feedback regarding the scope and work that into the bid. administration could take the feedback regarding the scope and work that into the bid solicitation process in regards to it being paved for the entirety of the road, if that's the commission's pleasure.
We need some, we need a motion, Commissioner Torrey. Commissioner Collins?
Do they have to say that the whole entire thing's going to be paved?
If that's what we'd like to have, if the commission would like to have that done, it would have to say that.
How do you make the motion?
You'd make a motion that in the, in the public improvement scheduled for public hearing of necessity, you include the total roadway, I would think. Is that correct?
Okay. So motion approved, first resolution of public improvement scheduled for public hearing of necessity, 7:00 PM on Monday, August 6th, 2018, West Eighth Avenue reconstruction, ST 0218, with the whole thing being paved. The scope of the project with the whole road being paved.
Support. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrey?
Yes.
Mayor Bosmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item one under communications is from the Blue Ribbon Finance Committee, approval of committee structure.
Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. As commissioners are aware, action was taken at the February 19th meeting to adopt the goal to establish a Blue Ribbon Finance Committee to explore municipal revenue options. The purpose of this goal is to provide an avenue through which the city, its partners, employees, and citizens, as well as property owners, can proactively position the community for future growth, wealth creation, and vibrancy in the headwinds of the state's broken municipal finance system. It is well-known that high-quality communities with strong public services, economic opportunities, and vibrant places are magnets for young, educated individuals, which bring innovative ideas and highly sought-after talent to a local economy, and are also places where people choose to raise families, invest in their communities, and retire. And increasingly, the quality of a community plays a role in attracting and retaining businesses. Michigan needs thriving, high-quality communities if it is going to be economically competitive with other states. Throughout the state of Michigan and locally, property values dropped during the recent economic recession and in subsequent years. However, local governments have not been able to recover taxable values because of statutory and constitutional mechanisms, such as Proposal A and Headley Amendment, which limit the recovery of values supporting community services. As commissioners are also aware, as property values decrease, the state chose to cut billions of dollars out of the statutory revenue sharing program to cover shortfalls in the state budget. Cities and villages have lost over $7.5 billion in revenue sharing funds from the state since 2002. While the state budget has largely recovered from the economic recession, the state imposed restraints on local revenues left many communities behind and forced them to make tough choices, which can have serious consequences for their residents and plans to advance economically. As has been noted previously to the city commission, between 2002 and '12, revenues for the state increased by 29%, whereas the revenue from the states and local governments decreased by an astounding 56%. As has also been noted previously, the city's revenue sharing for the 2019 fiscal year is just over $1.6 million, which represents a decrease of $447,000 or 21%, without considering inflation when compared to peak revenue sharing values. It is estimated the city has lost about $7.3 million in total revenue sharing since these cuts were aggressively implemented by the state within the past 15 years. As commissioners are aware, is it essential that municipal finance system for Michigan communities meet the needs of a modern, competitive economy? On a statewide level, the Michigan Municipal League is advocating to correct this issue by addressing the unforeseen interactions between Proposal A and the Headley Amendment, which result in less than inflationary growth for communities. It is also calling for the state to recommit to making investments in revenue sharing and expanding the authority for municipalities locally, to support those efforts which result in investments in infrastructure and place. As noted previously, the city commission established a goal to create a Blue Ribbon Finance Committee to provide an avenue through which the city, its community, employees, and citizens, as well as property owners, can proactively position the community for future growth. During the March 5th meeting, the city commission appointed commissioners Collins and Geary to work with city administration to identify the tasks to be completed by the committee, to identify the timeframe within which such tasks are to be completed, to identify the means through which the members of the committee would be selected and appointed, and to identify means through which the entire community can be effectively engaged in the tasks of the committee. Upon the completion of these aims, the framework was to be returned to the city commission for approval. Accordingly, the committee has convened and is recommending that the Blue Ribbon Finance Committee be tasked with identifying and examining additional revenue sources that could be pursued or implemented by the city. Concurrently, the committee would not exercise a role in reviewing expenditures, which would remain the responsibility of city administration. Further, it is anticipated that the existence of this committee would be time-limited and would complete its tasks within one to two years. In regards to the composition, it is recommended that city residents, as well as business owners or property owners who are not city residents, be eligible to serve on the committee. Further, it would be expected that members would represent a diverse range of stakeholders, be inclusive of all segments of the community, and engage with a number of larger sectors within the area, such as education, military, and so on. It's also recommended the city commission initially appoint three members of the community to review applications, encourage membership, and make recommendations to the commission regarding the appointment of other members or the removal of members from the committee. These individuals would join commissioners Collins and Geary, city administration, and one representative from the Michigan Municipal League in efforts to complete design tasks. It is envisioned that no more than 11 community members would serve on the committee. Finally, in order to engage the public in the process, it's recommended all meetings be open to the public. That minutes be taken at each meeting are posted on the city's website, and that minutes from each meeting be submitted to the city commission for acceptance. Other means of promoting transparency will certainly be sought after. If the city commission approves of the recommendations detailed herein, the next step would be for the city commission to accept these recommendations and authorize city administration to solicit letters of interest from community members who may wish to serve on this committee. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, thank you. You want to read the motion?
Absolutely. The motion that is presented to the city commission for consideration would be to accept the recommendations as presented regarding the Blue Ribbon Finance Committee, and to authorize city administration to solicit letters of interest from community members who may wish to serve on the Blue Ribbon Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Gary, this was your goal. And would you like to speak and make a motion?
I think city manager summarized it very well, so I'd make a motion to accept the recommendations as presented regarding the Blue Ribbon Finance Committee and authorize city administration to solicit letters of interest from community members who may wish to serve on the Blue Ribbon Finance Committee.
Support.
Move supported. Commissioner Collins, you have any, would you like to add? Thank you. Are there any questions? Commissioner Miller?
So the committee would be made up of 11 community members?
That's what the proposal is, yes.
And Commissioner Gary and Collins, and who else?
That would be determined, well, that would be determined by the committee?
Thank you.
City manager, anything else?
Thank you for commissioner. The composition would be such as you noted, as well as city administration and one representative from the Michigan Municipal League, who's expressed a willingness to participate.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrey?
Yes.
Mayor Bosmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. We are now into item number G, which is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one, under the city manager's report, would provide for the award of a bid for the purchase of a 2019 Ford Explorer for the carpool fleet. As commissioners are aware, in the city's carpool fleet, two travel vehicles are required. These vehicles are primarily used for out-of-town travel, where safety and reliability are essential. In recent years, city administration has determined that SUVs with four-wheel drive are a deal for this application. Oftentimes, employees must travel in poor weather conditions, where mid-sized SUVs provide a much higher level of safety and comfort at minimal extra cost over that of a large four-door car. Specifications were written with no particular carpool vehicle as a target, but with identified preferences, such as four-wheel drive, seven-passenger seating, safety items, and adequate cargo capacity, among other features. Bid notifications were placed in the evening news and on the city website. Packages were mailed to 11 dealers who have supplied vehicle bids in the past. And on July 10th, four bids from three dealers were opened in the city clerk's office. After review, the bid for the 2019 Ford Explorer XLT 200A from Sioux Motors of Sioux St. Marie was selected for recommendation for purchase. It is the low bid meeting primary specifications. If approved, this will replace the 2007 Ford Taurus as a travel vehicle. The Taurus is still a very good car for in-town use, but go to City Hall Carpool, where it would replace the 1995 Taurus, which would be sold on Gov. Deals. Accordingly, it's my recommendation the city commission approve the purchase of a 2019 Ford Explorer from Sioux Motors for the total of $31,116, being low bid meeting specifications. As a note, this expense is within the established budget of $33,000 for this purchase. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Miller?
I move that we authorize the purchase of the 2019 Ford Explorer from Sioux Motors for the cost of $31,116.
Support. The move's supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Valentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrey?
Yes.
Mayor Bosmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item two, under the city manager's report, would provide authorization to submit an application for bicycle-friendly community status. As commissioners are aware, city administration has been working throughout recent months to implement bicycle-friendly improvements. Recent examples of progress include the installation of a dedicated bicycle lane during the West Fourth Avenue reconstruction project, the installation of bicycle racks and amenities downtown, the consideration of bicycle-friendly amenities where streets are ranked during the capital improvement planning process, the designation of an officer with the police department to interact with local bicycling enthusiasts, and promote bicycle safety education, the expansion of dialogue with the International Bridge Administration and other entities regarding expanded bicycling opportunities and regional interconnectivity, the construction of a non-motorized pathway by the power canal, and strength in communication between the city and local bicycling groups. Recently, city administration has been working with Bike Friendly Sioux on the development of an application to the League of American Bicyclists, seeking a bicycle-friendly communities designation. Bike Friendly Sioux has undertaken a considerable amount of work in support of developing the application, and relevant input will be provided by numerous city departments. Several portions of the application have been included for review and awareness. Importantly, it's anticipated that the initial submission of the application would not lead to the city obtaining a designation, but rather, it's expected that the review of the application will be used to obtain feedback from the League of American Bicyclists regarding specific areas of focus that can inform the making of improvements that may eventually lead to such a designation. Further, it's anticipated that the collaborative efforts of the city and bicycling enthusiasts, such as Bike Friendly Sioux, will continue to focus on making improvements during the coming months, and may support an expanded application to this program in 2019, informed by any feedback received from this year. There is no cost to the city to apply. Accordingly, it would be my recommendation that the city commission authorize city administration to submit an application to the League of American Bicyclists in order to receive feedback regarding improvements that may lead to a future bicycle-friendly community designation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Valentino?
Yes, I think this is very important. That being said, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city administration to submit an application to the League of American Bikeland, biking, in order to receive feedback regarding improvements on what may lead to a future bicycle-friendly community designation.
Support.
The move's supported. We have just a couple of gentlemen in the audience that are really involved in the bicycle-friendly, Oliver, would you like to just introduce them?
Right, sure. Mr. Blanchard is here tonight.
Would you like to say a few words?
The counterpart would like to join as well.
Would you like to say a few words, Robert?
Yeah, I just wanted to state that Houghton and Marquette already have bicycle-friendly community status. They've had it for many, many years. And roughly two years ago, they both got silver status. And so, from my perspective, that indicates that there are advantages to having that. And I think it would be advantageous for the Sioux to have that as well.
Thank you, Roger. Would you like to introduce the other gentleman with you, if you... Oh, oh. Wayne is here.
Thank you, commissioners.
Evening, Wayne.
I'm a mechanic, because I started working on bicycles when I was seven years old. It's been a big part of my enjoyment in my life ever since. I'm involved with Roger on this group primarily because of Building Healthier Community Coalition, and we try to work towards events and resources that promote physical activity. And I think we've all seen an increase in the use of bicycles, even year-round, even in the Sioux. Younger people, older people, for various reasons, can or cannot get a vehicle operation license. We've worked hard through our rodeo program to educate both the cyclists and the motorists about the rules and regulations for people riding bikes on public streets. This is part of the application through League of American Bicyclists, to educate and engineer bicycle resources in their city. But again, it's a big personal thing for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Torrey?
Just a couple of questions. Thank you. How difficult is it to establish the designation?
It's a matter of application. One of the things that we're working on right now is getting somebody to instructor training, so that they can be a bicycle safety instructor. Opportunities are fairly rare. They're fairly spread out around the country. So that's going to be one thing that we'll be working on, is getting somebody into that training for certification.
And then with your discussions with the city manager, are you guys talking about different signs around Share the Roadway, Bike Friendly Community, different signage to put up?
There's quite a substantial effort through MDOT to get those Share the Road signs out. You've probably seen a few of them this year. There's even more of an effort going on to Share the Road. Pro Sports has one, same rules, same rights, same roads. And we're trying to get that out. We think that working through middle school and high school and getting some good habits into the younger bike riders will carry them through the rest of their life, and maybe be a good example for us to...
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Wayne. We have a motion to support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Torrey?
Yes.
Mayor Bosmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentino?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item three, under the city manager's report, would provide for approval of a right-of-way private use agreement for East Tenth Avenue for night properties. On this matter, I've requested that city engineer Basista present to the commission.
Good evening, again.
Evening, again.
On June 20th, my office received an agreement, or an application for a private use agreement to encroach upon the right-of-way with a deck that had actually already been constructed. The deck, city ordinances require certain setbacks from the right-of-way for buildings and decks and porches and so forth. And so, not only, you know, encroaching into the right-of-way, but then it, of course, didn't meet the setbacks. So the deck did go to the zoning board of appeals and received a variance for the setback, required setbacks. And then subsequently, that's following that, in June last month, I received the application for a private use agreement. This is very similar to one, the most recent one probably was on Brown Street and Helen Street, or Pine Street, we gave to Jason McLeod for deck and porches that were encroaching in the right-of-way. The private use agreements are, once executed, they get filed with the register of deeds, so that the, any new property owners purchasing the property would also know that there are these restrictions, or that the deck then is there under agreement and not by right, essentially. So there are certain stipulations in the, in the agreement, and it really spells out to the property owners, too, that, you know, it could get damaged by snow, snow plowing operations, or we could come through with a project in the right-of-way. So this just advises the property owner... So, this just advises the property owners, all pro- you know, the property owners of record, whoever owns property at the time, that it's there, you know, under agreement. So, this is at 1613 Kimball Street, but the encroachment into the right-of-way is into the East 10th Avenue right-of-way.
Any questions? Commissioner Torri?
Thank you. Just some comments. When you look at the pictures of before and after, it's definitely a case where this property is being improved upon drastically, and I applaud that. And it's also just a case of where we have such an old community, very small lot sizes, and, you know, when the community was built, well, 300 years ago, we weren't really planning on the amount of space that we need now to make our properties look and feel the way that we would like for them to feel for creature comforts. And so, I think this is a great, I know it's the first-time homeowner, she's purchasing this house through rural development, and I'm excited to have her as a new member of our community.
Thank you. Commissioner Gary?
A question for the city attorney. We are financing the purchase of this house from the current owners at my employment, and the purchase is contingent on this approval, so I'd like to abstain from any discussion or vote.
You should abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner Collins?
Just a question on the easement. So, in the notes, I noticed that there was a question of whether the easement will stay with the property forever, or if it's with the owner, or if it's for the duration of the deck. And then, it was stated that it was going to be written in the agreement, so how is it written in the agreement?
I'd defer to the city attorney.
City attorney?
No, this is not an easement, it's a license, and the uses allowed under the terms and conditions of the license as stated in the license, and the city can revoke the license in the future if it needed to.
There's no stipulation as far as, like, the deck can't be there for the city to revoke it?
I don't understand the question.
So, the deck's still there, but for some reason, the city wants to revoke the license and then forces the owner to remove the deck?
That could happen, and that would be done by the city commission.
Okay. Commissioner Collins? Okay. Commissioner Torri?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the private use agreement allowing for the encroachment of a deck by property at 1613 Kimball Street into the East 10th right-of-way.
Support. The move's supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Basmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item four under the city manager's report would provide for approval of a collective bargaining agreement with the police patrol bargaining unit. As commissioners are aware, city administration has been engaged in the collective bargaining process with the city's unionized employees for the past several months. Included for review and consideration is the negotiated successor collective bargaining agreement that could be entered into by the city and the police patrol bargaining unit. Specific changes to the existing collective bargaining agreement include an adjustment permitting employees of the bargaining unit to use one day of accrued sick leave for family emergencies, the provision of funeral leave benefits which align with those currently received by non-union employees, a reduction in pension benefits for new hires hired into the bargaining unit after the date of contract ratification to include a 2.6 multiplier applied to the first 27 years of service with an employee contribution of 7.62% of wages toward the cost of pension benefits, the deletion of a grooming clause and confrontation clause, an increase in shift differential pay from 3% to 5% for officers working from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. upon ratification of the agreement, a one-time increase in post-employee healthcare benefits, and the establishment of a system through which such benefits can be distributed to eligible recipients, an adjustment of roughly 0.7% for detective pay to be 7.5% up from 6.8% for those, for the rates to be higher than those patrol officers with five or more years of experience, and wage increases of 3% effective July 1st, 2017, and 2% for each fiscal year beginning July 1st, '18, '19, and '20. The term of the successor collective bargaining agreement would run from July 1st, '17 through June 30, 2021 for four fiscal years. As commissioners are aware, the city has maintained fiscal stability under difficult circumstances that are impacting many other municipalities within the state and under circumstances unique to the city. Concurrently, the wage increases agreed upon by the parties, in my assessment, strike the correct balance between ensuring this stability continues into the future and attracting and retaining skilled employees whose efforts contribute to the advancement of the community. On behalf of city administration, I would like to thank the members of the police patrol bargaining unit for their continued contributions to the city and serving the community in an effective and professional manner. Accordingly, it would be my recommendation that the city commission authorize the city manager and city attorney to execute the negotiated successor collective bargaining agreement between the city and police patrol bargaining unit in its substantially presented form. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Commissioner Baker.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager and city attorney to execute the negotiated successor collective bargaining agreement between the city of Sioux St. Marie and the police patrol bargaining unit in its substantially presented form.
Support. The move's supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Basmas?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item five under the city manager's report would provide for the approval of a collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters bargaining unit. Included for review and consideration by the commission is the negotiated agreement that could be entered into by the city and the firefighters bargaining unit. Specific changes to the existing collective bargaining agreement include a clarification to the process through which tested positions are filled, as well as a clarification to the date from which seniority is measured for purposes of scoring during the testing process, an alignment of the definition of minimum manning to current practice, and the removal of vague language on the same, as well as a clarification regarding seniority and call-in procedures, an adjustment of the location of grooming standards within the agreement in order to increase contract functionality and transparency, an annual increase in the food allowance of $100, and an increase in transfer pager pay from $150 to $180 upon ratification, as well as 2% wage increases annually to become effective on July 1st, '17, 2018, and 2019. In addition, the city and bargaining unit have successfully negotiated a memorandum of understanding pertaining to pension benefits, which states, "The parties will work in good faith toward reducing the cost of the established pension plan and negotiate changes relating to the same. The willingness expressed by the firefighters to reduce pension costs will be significant given anticipated requirements to be issued by the state of Michigan in this area." Finally, it should be noted that the wage increases would also become effective for members of the fire captain's bargaining unit due to Me Too clauses contained within the fire captain's most recent agreement. The term of the successor agreement would run from July 1st, '17 through June 30, 2020, or for three fiscal years. As is the case with the other agreements approved, the wage increases agreed upon strike the correct balance between fiscal stability and the attracting and retaining of employees. On behalf of city administration, I would like to thank the members of the firefighters' bargaining unit for their continued contributions to the city and serving the community effectively and professionally. Accordingly, it would be my recommendation that the city commission authorize the city manager and city attorney to execute the negotiated successor collective bargaining agreement between the city and the firefighters bargaining unit, as well as the negotiated memorandum of understanding pertaining to pension benefits in their substantially presented forms. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gary?
Make a motion to authorize the city manager and city attorney to execute the negotiated successor collective bargaining agreement between the city of Sioux St. Marie and firefighters' bargaining unit, as well as the negotiated memorandum of understanding pertaining to pension benefits in their substantially presented form.
Support.
The move's supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Basmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item six under the city manager's report would provide for the approval of a tax tribunal and appeal joint defense agreement. As city commissioners are aware, the city is currently engaged in a case at the Michigan Tax Tribunal with Meyer. This tax appeal pertains to the 2018 tax year or for the December 31st, 2017 valuation. Should the city not prevail at the Michigan Tax Tribunal in this case or achieve a favorable settlement, the community stands to lose a substantial level of revenues through mandatory reimbursements and a potentially sizable decrease in taxable value. Notably, while this case is specific to the '18 tax year, the ultimate outcome from it could potentially translate to an annual loss for the city exceeding $33,500 and an annual loss for all taxing units approximating $90,100 if awarded as requested by the petitioner. This loss in taxable value would require several years, if not decades, to recover from due to proposal aid. Recognizing that an issue with these ramifications requires a communal response, city administration has been working with Chippewa County and the Eastern Upper Peninsula Intermediate School District to review the included tax tribunal and appeal joint defense agreement through which local units of government could financially contribute to the defense. The city will be mounting at the tax tribunal level and as warranted through Michigan's appellate courts, subject to the terms and provisions of the agreement. Recently, the Chippewa County Board of Commissioners approved participation in this agreement for Chippewa County to share 32% to 33% of costs, as would be provided. The EUP ISD has also approved participation in the agreement at the rate of 2% up to $5,000. It should be noted that this level of support is in line with previous agreements which involved Walmart and Cascade Crossings' properties. Certainly, the significant support from Chippewa County, its board and administrator Jim German, as well as the EUP ISD, its board, and superintendent Dan Rietor is welcome as a coalition on this matter is being formed. Being able to move forward with the communal response on this matter will provide the best opportunity to prevail at the Michigan Tax Tribunal level and preserve the ability of the city, county, and EUP ISD to provide the core services the community has come to expect. Accordingly, it would be my recommendation that the city commission authorize the city manager to execute the included and presented agreement in its substantially presented form and authorize the city manager to amend the agreement to include other local partners provided the cost-share percentage to the city does not increase. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Miller?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the city manager to execute the included and presented agreement in its substantially presented form and authorize the city manager to amend the agreement to include other local partners provided the cost-share percentage to the city does not increase.
Support.
The move's supported. Commissioner Torri, you got a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So, what happened to the original agreement that we had with Meyer, with them stating that they would not take us to tax tribunal within the first, what, five or seven years after they completed construction?
All right, thank you for that question, Commissioner. The city currently has a development agreement with Meyer, and as part of that agreement, Meyer agreed that if the taxable value fell below $7.5 million, in that case, the agreed-upon reimbursement by the city of certain public infrastructure costs would be able to cease, with the exception of the first year. So, the agreement is structured in such a manner that recognizes at the time Meyer constructed their store, there was approximately $1.5 million in public infrastructure improvements. The city agreed to reimburse approximately 20% of those costs, or $300,000, on an equal basis over seven years. So, if at any point in that time, that taxable value dropped below $7.5 million, those payments over the seven years would cease. The development agreement didn't necessarily, it doesn't require them to waive their ability to challenge taxable value, but there is a trigger in the agreement of $7.5 million.
So, at this point, are we, we are being a little cautious in payment, I would think?
That is correct. In consultation with the city attorney, the city's positioned that until the taxable value is determined through this process or through a settlement, that no payments would be made until that valuation is truly determined.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion in support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Basmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
And item seven under the city manager's report would provide for approval to enter into closed session regarding the tax tribunal case. City attorney Canelo and I would like to consult with the city commission on the Michigan Tax Tribunal case with Meyer and related trial and settlement strategies in closed session. Section 8E of the State of Michigan Open Meetings Act, being Public Act 267 of 1976, specifically states that a public body may meet in a closed session to consult with its attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation. As opposed to many instances in which the city commission enters into closed session tonight, would please note that in this instance, it is possible that the city commission will be reconvening in open session in order to take actions regarding this subject matter. The motion would be to enter into closed session in order to discuss trial and/or settlement strategies as pertaining to the State of Michigan Tax Tribunal case in accordance with Section 8E of the State of Michigan Open Meetings Act. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gary?
I make a motion to enter into closed session in order to discuss trial and/or settlement strategies as pertaining to the State of Michigan Tax Tribunal case with Goodwill Company, Inc., in accordance with Section 80 of the State of Michigan Open Meetings Act.
Support. And understanding that we may come back into closed session, or an open session, to discuss that item. Yes. And we'll continue on now and then go into closed session at the end of the meeting, or not, at least when we're done with this business. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Basmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
That concludes the city manager's report. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Item number H is the status report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one under status reports is an update on Smart Zone activities. On this matter, EDC Executive Director Holt is here to present to the city commission.
Okay.
Good evening.
Mayor. Commissioner. Okay. Okay, thank you for this opportunity to give you an update on the current Smart Zone activities in Sioux St. Marie here. As you'll see, the three buildings that we operate are pretty familiar, the Smart Zone up in the upper left, the Sanderson Field on the upper right, and the former industrial, or the current industrial incubator on Easterday Avenue. In our Smart Zone activities and the industrial park, you'll see that, whoops, you'll see the following companies, and a couple of them I'd like to point out. Norpro is a securities company. SIS is a group that would like to potentially start up a manufacturing entity here, and Osprey, in the middle there in the black, they are a new company that operates a CNC machine, and they will be having an open house in our facility in the end of August, and we will announce that and hope everyone can come. And you'll see other, some of the other entities that are in our buildings. It's the layout of our operation at the Smart Zone, and as you can see, the offices in the front are occupied 100%, and the space in the back is also occupied 100%. The Lake Superior Simulation Center will be moving on campus at the end of August. We are working to fill that space as we speak. We hope to have, be successful soon. Couple of items I'd like to point out, and I won't go through every single one of these, but the Osprey Technologies, they completed the calibration on the Gantry CNC test. The engineering graduate student from LSSU is starting part-time in July. They are working with Grand Valley University on a marketing plan, and are in the process of trade studies for leasing, purchasing, or building permanent building in the Eastern UP, and we will be working with them to accomplish that. Norpro on the bottom, they recently had the ribbon-cutting ceremony in the Smart Zone building. They have hired two staff people, and they're still looking to hire more, and this is a nationwide company that specializes in security and industrial and government data and safety and sales execution. As I mentioned, the Simulation Center, they've been a proud partner of us up there for over five years. Capstone Leadership provides management sol- Capstone Leadership provides management solutions for the health industry, and they've got three full-time staff plus six coaches and an associate, nationwide. Canadian Maple LLC is our newest client, and they operate a small office in our facility as well. As I mentioned earlier, the SIS Group, they're looking to potentially build a site, manufacturing site in St. Mary, and we're looking forward to that. And Superior Aqua Systems has been in the building since the beginning, and they are also partnering with the Sea Free Project at Lake State. This is our incubator out on Easterday, and as you can see, ninety percent of the space is of, being utilized by Mako International, and they are doing a nice job of keeping the building in good shape, and we do have some space available. The current offices in the front of the building, you'll see the green arrows there, we've got about twelve hundred square feet available for lease, and we're in the process of hopefully getting a tenant very soon, and we'll renovate those buildings accordingly. Other notable items, our air industrial parks are ready for sales, and we've made progress with a bi-national investment district, which is something I'll get to in the next month or so. I'll give you more information on that with the agreement between Sioux Ontario area and the Sioux Michigan area. We're real excited about that. The U.S. Coast Guard Vinyl Program has been a tremendous success. We still get calls from folks that want to add to the list of folks that are collaborative with the U.S. Coast Guard families, and some offer discounts. Our concierge program has been very successful. We've been very happy with the results on that. We're in the process of certifying our two industrial parks through the Michigan Economic Development Association, and that will give us marketing opportunities statewide to market our properties. We recently renovated the terminal at the airport, and we're very happy with that, and we're in the initial stages of preparing our industrial slots on Easterday for sale. You'll see many events that we've had over the last six or eight months, and you'll see that we've had everything from an after-workshop to manufacturing alliance meetings, Michigan Manufacturers Association meetings, PTAC, which specializes in government contracting, was there recently, and sales training for business leaders. We also hosted, or co-hosted, rather, the Block Party Downtown, and we're already in the process of planning another one. We've had Breakfast with Bankers, Transportation Logistics Group, MSU Great Lakes Research, and LSSU Sea Free and Norpro Training. And this is how we get the word out. We've all seen these before as part of our concierge program, and we've been very pleased with the results, and the feedback has been, has been wonderful. This is about us on our website, suultec.com. Please contact us, and we'd love to hear from you. And that's us.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, and certainly, we know you've been very busy along with your staff in filling the different areas that are available. Of course, Lake Superior State moving to bring the Sim Lab to their home and into the Fine Arts Center will allow some space to be available.
Right.
And it looks like you're aggressively marketing that. Any other questions, or good job. Commissioner Twardy?
Thank you. More of a comment. Thank you for not posing any more open-ended questions on Facebook. That got, that got fairly overwhelming, and just the variety of comments, and then, you know, things always go south. But I like it when you do ask questions, and, because I think that's how you get valuable feedback, but having it really narrow and limited, of course, you'll always get some negativity, but, but thank you for doing what you guys do.
Thank you.
Staying busy up there.
Thank you.
City manager? Anything else?
Certainly appreciate Mr. Holt's presentation and the work that the EDC continues to do in conjunction with our many parks.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And item two, under Status Reports, is an update regarding the opening of a twenty-four-hour compost drop-off site. An update that in order to lessen costs and increase public convenience, the Department of Public Works has created a compost drop-off site. The site is located next to the road leading to the compost yard just off of East Easterday. It's going to be open for twenty-four hours for city residents to drop off leaves and grass at any time. To implement this, the city repurposed an old kiosk that was formerly downtown, and as a start, the site will accept only leaves and grass, but in the future, the city plans on expanding the site to include a twenty-four-hour total compost pickup site. The dropping off of branches and brush must currently and will continue to be done on Wednesdays and Saturdays when the compost yard is open and staffed, but the new drop-off site is an effort to allow greater use of the popular service at minimal cost, and I appreciate the efforts of the Department of Public Works, Director Morrow, Superintendent Fountain, and many others to implement a program that simultaneously reduces expenses and increases services. Thank you.
Any questions, or you comments? I understand, because it's not a large area, there'll be staff working the next day or wherever they happen, if it's a weekend, to empty that site and move it inside.
Correct. Certainly, in an area that they'll keep a very close watch on.
Excellent. Thank you.
And that concludes the Status Report section. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Item number I, matters presented by the public. Does anyone in the audience like to make a comment at this time? If you'd like to come to the microphone and please identify yourself for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm Carmen Bonacci, and I'm the owner of Bonacci Contracting with my family, okay? And I'm here today just to try to do, defend my company, and I'm, I'm here and ask this commission to revisit your actions of last meeting. Our company was the low bidder, but the job was not awarded to us, but instead to the high bidder because there was clerical mistakes in our bid. Consider that we are bonded, our company's bonded, and we, we put forward a valid bond, and that guarantees the city that our performance would be timely and to the specifications in the, in the bid documents. Consider that if our company would have been the successful bidder, that all the resource, all the money spent on this project from the city would be, would be left here, every penny. The wages of our employees, the suppliers are all local, and the profit and overhead would be spent here by us, okay? And in contrast, the high bidder would spend almost none of it, and, and on top of that, you gotta pay more to the high bidder. He was many, many thousands higher than us. I'd like to read a little passage here from the, from the bid documents. It says, "The city reserves the right to reject any and all proposals or to waive any irregularities, technicality in the proposal in the best interest of the city." And I'm here to question that. I'm here to question that what happened last meeting. You know, we thought we were the low bidder, so we didn't come here to defend it. You know, we're, we're busy, like the man said, and I, you know, all the contractors seem to be busy, but I'm sorry I didn't come, because I definitely would have stood up and said, hey, this ain't right, you know? There was some technical difficulty in our bid, but the bid price was there, the breakdown was accepted. And, you know, like I say, there's, you can make excuses and say things after you've done something, but that this actually should have never went this way. You know, I, you know, you get disappointed when you lose a job because you're high bid, but hell, you lose it here instead of being low bid, that really is depressing, okay? And my wife, you know, she, we've been looking for a way to, you know, do a memorial for my daughter, and I don't know what you guys can do, and I'm not positive, but if, if you find a way to make this right, because this is wrong, you know, we are willing to give the profit back to the city for its projects like Ball Diamonds and, and tracks for the, the bicycle path at the canal, and, you know, the sum of our, the sum of our profit and overhead was five and five, so it's like a five thousand dollars. You know, like I say, we're willing to do that, and we have talked, me and my mother, my wife, about, you know, having a memorial for Andrea. She was murdered last November. We've also talked to the tribe about matching our, our donation. Like I say, it's up to you guys. If you guys have the ability to do what's right by all the citizens of the state, our company, my suppliers, I mean, and they're all from here, I'll make this donation to you guys. I guess that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the opportunities that I've had to speak with Mr. Bonacci recently. As the, as the commission is aware, just to give an overview of the process, the bidding process is highly regulated. It's designed to be highly regulated in order to protect the public's interest by ensuring a consistent structure. It is applied on an equitable basis, and it's not designed to have a bias that impacts any individual or any particular company. And this is done, as, has been explained by the city attorney, in order to prevent favoritism, to prevent potential collusion after bid documents are opened, and to advance the integrity of local government. In this particular instance, bids were solicited for an underdrain project at the airport. The bidding documents contain very specific directions. It was structured as a unit contract, not a lump-sum contract, and also requires that the use of the city bid bond form be followed. Unfortunately, for Bonacci Contracting, only the lump sum was applied, and the correct bid bond form was not used. So unit pricing is critical in these types of awards to ensure that if there's a change ordered of some kind, or to compare the as-constructed quantities to what was quoted, to have those prices to be able to identify cost differentials which may occur. So as a result, it was determined that their bid was not responsive to the bid documents, and the project was awarded to Team Elmer's. So certainly, I would encourage if there are questions about the bidding process, that's certainly something city administration would make itself available to discuss, but we do feel that the process was applied appropriately.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Collins?
So have we already awarded the bid then, or have we not done that yet?
Thank you, Commissioner. That was, action was taken at the previous city commission meeting on July second.
But have they actually been awarded the bid? Have they been notified that they've got the bid?
Yes.
Well, just to kind of give you guys my perspective from what I've heard, because I've talked to several contractors, including Mr. Bonacci, and the, one of the things that kind of caught me, being that I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I did watch the video, is that Bonacci Contracting was actually listed as or called the lowest bid. So if their bid's not accepted because they didn't submit the correct paperwork, then it's not a valid bid, so you shouldn't even state that it was a bid. Does that make sense?
It does make sense to me, and this is something that's been discussed with the city attorney as well.
Okay, but it's also my understanding that they did submit the itemized information that was requested in time for, I guess, the, from, from what I'm understanding, is that they were actually informed that they had submitted their information in a timely fashion. So I would definitely, for one, like more clarification as far as facts behind what happened and how that happened, because like Commissioner Twardy had stated earlier, I want to see as much business go to local contractors as possible, and if it's an, if it was just a mistake, then we own it, and we move forward, right? But what I don't want to see is kind of a facting, throwing back and forth as far as he said, she said, just show us what happened, and then we can kind of go from there. If there was a mistake made on our side, then we have to own that. If there wasn't, then we move forward anyways.
And I, I also agree, and I think the commission agrees, that we can spend our money, government money locally. We certainly want to do that, and it's certainly, Mr. Bonacci employs local people, much like other businesspeople in the community, so it's important that we, in fact, and we have a, in our bidding procedure, we have a five percent bid allow for local contractors, including Chippewa County, and Mr. Bonacci has been in business for a long, long time, done exceptional work over those years, so it's not a matter of being competent enough to do it. I guess it was the, as I understand it, was the bid form and how the numbers came back and where we are at this point, I guess it's up to the commission, but let's go to Commissioner Miller first.
I questioned this at the last meeting, and I can't remember what the city attorney, city manager, I'm sorry, gave me for explanation, but he said that the paperwork was done incorrectly or whatever, and you couldn't go back and help Mr. Bonacci in any way, but his, his bid would have still been the same, like his end number still would have been the same, right? So if it was a couple of clerical things, it seems to me like that could have been fixed.
City manager?
It was about the fairness. He said it has to do with the fairness, so there's no collusion. I understood that, but his bottom line would have been the same number, so I mean, he wouldn't have been fudging his number, he wouldn't have changed his number.
Right, so I'd be happy to answer that question. From administration's perspective, at the time the bid opening occurred, there was not unit pricing which was supplied. It's my understanding that the consultant, QOE, requested unit pricing, and it was off from the dollar figures which were submitted. It wasn't off by great amount, it was off by thirty-five or forty dollars, but there was a variance. However, typically, in the bidding process, that solicitation of additional information would and should not occur generally.
Commissioner Baker?
In regards to the, what Mr. Bonacci read, as far as the commission having the leeway to make the decision, I was unaware of that last week, our last meeting, as far as we have the authority as a commission to override or overrule that bid process based off of, you know, from my understanding, it had to go down to a clerical error. The numbers would match otherwise, and with that, I mean, with knowing that information and being a local, as Commissioner Twardy stated earlier, working with our local contractors or businesses is important, I feel like as a commission, maybe we should reconsider it.
Commissioner Twardy?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess that's my question then. So then, was it, was the bid valid or was it, was it invalid? Was it an acceptable bid? So that's question number one. And then, if it, if it was a valid bid, do we have the ability to withdraw our bid approval to the, to Elmer's and reevaluate? That's more of a legal question. So if, if we're not able to do that, then there's no further discussion needed, but if there is the ability to do that, then maybe what we need to find out is, is the bid valid or is it invalid, and then can we change our minds?
City attorney?
There's questions that I have that only the city engineer can answer, and my question is, has the city transmitted to Elmer's the notice of award, and has Elmer's accepted?
City manager?
I believe that would actually be under the purview at this point of the deputy city manager or EDC director, if that notice of award has been distributed and signed. I do know that there are contract documents which have not been completed for Team Elmer's.
Well, there's a, in the awarding process, there's a specific document, and the city engineer can explain how that notice of award and acceptance of the award is handled, but you're going to need to know whether that has occurred.
City engineer, is that a question for, no?
No, I don't believe it's under the city engineer's jurisdiction at this point in time.
It's not?
No.
Who's jurisdiction is it?
Right, so this would be handled through the EDC, routing the paperwork through clerk's office?
It's an EDC, that's an EDC job.
So that was actually my original question as well.
Well, does the EDC director know? Well, does the EDC director know?
I do not know, I do not think that, well, I'll pay more than that.
So, it hasn't been done?
Well, that's kind of an open statement. I mean, I'm talking specifically, has the notice, the written notice of award been delivered to Elmers by the city, and has it been accepted by Elmers?
My understanding is that the award has been accepted.
So, if the city commission were to change its mind, you would, you would owe damages to Elmer, whatever those damages might be.
Can we get validation that that was actually submitted?
Commissioner Collins? You don't have a floor. Long time ago. But ultimately, we're at, we're at an impasse at this point, and no, I guess we aren't, but we have made a decision, and there will be, according to the information we have, I'm not sure if we can, would want to consider that, but kind of thing, because ultimately, things happen, you know. City Manager, we're looking for a little help.
Certainly, administration will undertake any direction by the city commission that's issued to us as far as any reconsideration. However, obviously, it would take some, a bit of due diligence on our part to determine if the notice of award has been executed and transmitted.
I guess, these irregularities that occur, because a statement is there? How often do we, I guess it's kind of a general question, do we ever make decisions that, because of the irregularities, that we work with a particular contractor to make the irregularities clean? Or is that, is that just automatically, after a couple of times of trying to get information, it's just disregarded?
Thank you for that question, Mayor. My understanding is that it depends, the amount of information that may be lacking, and the number of issues which may arise in the bidding process. If it's one number that may be transposed in the bidding form, that would be a separate matter than not providing, for example, unit pricing.
And I also want to state that we have been very protective of our bidding process. We have spent many hours over the 26 years I've been in, be 28 or 27 years of involvement, discussing bidding procedures and how to keep it fair for everybody, because ultimately, it's important that we get the lowest price for the, for the public, and also the, a qualified contractor, which I think they both were. So, we have some questions. Let's go to Commissioner Miller.
Where are we at?
Yeah, exactly.
Where are we at?
Commissioner Gary, you haven't, you want to weigh in at all?
As much as I like Carmen and have used him personally myself, this is a very dangerous slope that we're looking at here. I think that we followed the advice of QOE, and...
QOE is who?
QOE was the engineering firm.
Okay.
They recommended Elmers, and we had an opportunity to ask questions at the last meeting, and we went forward on their recommendation. I think if there were questions about, you know, the verbiage that Carmen talked about, those things should have been fleshed out before they came to the commission level, from the administration level. And I think that we acted on the best knowledge that we had and the recommendation from the engineer. If we change this, as much as I'd love to see Carmen do the job, if we change this, then every bid from now on, whoever wins or loses the bid is going to come to the commission and promise something, and to try to get us to take, you know, this, the integrity of the process is at stake right now. So, we followed the process to the letter, and I know that some of us don't like the outcome of it, but I, I think that that was a recommendation of the engineer. And there's something about responsive, responsive bids and responsible bids, and this one wasn't both. Unfortunately, he didn't have everything in the package. So, I know that...
I agree.
Commissioner Collins?
I agree with everything you just said. I mean, we definitely don't want to jeopardize the integrity of the process, but if you have a contractor, regardless of who it is, that, and obviously, we don't know the conversations that happened with the outside engineer, and that wasn't a local engineer, but if you have something that was submitted, conversations had where then you had a breakdown that was submitted, and everything was communicated as if it was submitted correctly, right? So, obviously, there was some back and forth on that. I guess, my thought process is this, is we've made the decision based on the recommendation we had. If that recommendation was made without basically accurate information at the time, meaning that we made a decision based on not all the information that we needed at the time, is there a way, I guess, number one, can we see if it was actually awarded? So, can we have somebody check to see if there was, if it was actually awarded yet? Not that we're going to do anything different with that, but the other thing that I would like to see is, what actually happened? I mean, I know that you've got our, our bid form and our bond forms and those type of things, but how was it accepted then as a valid bid?
It may require a special meeting, I'm thinking, to resolve this, because we don't have that information. City Manager?
And the deputy city manager seems to be indicating that it was...
Yes, it's my understanding that the EDC informed Elmers of the commission's action at the last city commission meeting. On Thursday, July 12th, I received the signed executed documents from Elmers, and they are circulating internally to ensure that all Ts are crossed and Is are dotted for execution on the city's behalf. So, they have executed the documents on the end of the contractor.
So, obviously, it doesn't make sense to pull that back at this time, but I'd still like to, if we, if we can, go through the process and figure out what exactly happened as far as, there's, in my mind, talking to the different departments, there's some discrepancies there that I'm not comfortable with, and if we made a mistake on our side, so be it, but then we have to own it, whether, and move forward. And if we didn't make a mistake, then that's cool too, and both, I at least want to know what happened. I don't know if you guys feel the same way, but, so, I don't know, do we make a motion to, like, dig into it? What's the, what's the process?
Before we do that, City Attorney, what would be the next step?
Request before you is motion for reconsideration?
No.
No.
There's no, there is no motion.
Other than Mr. Benacci's request was for a motion of reconsideration?
Yes, that was, that was his request.
Okay, so the request before you is a motion for reconsideration. If there is no motion made to reconsider, then a second, or I should say, alternate motion could be made to request that the engineering firm appear before the city commission and explain its decision-making process and the steps that it took.
I like that, does that make sense? Okay, so do I make a motion to, make a motion based on what the city attorney said? Will that work?
I would think so.
Support.
Questions? Commissioner Miller?
Which part? Both parts? Or just, or just a special?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Both parts of what the, what the city attorney said, or not the reconsideration, right?
Oh, yeah. No, because we, we would do that.
Right.
Well, we wanted this an explanation of what happened.
But there's no motion for reconsideration because they've, they've already accepted the bid, right?
No.
Their contract.
Any questions?
Oh, you can say that again.
We have a motion and support, but no, we have a question.
Can I get clarification on the motion?
So, motion to have the engineer appear before the city commission, QOE, to appear before this commission, to give us an explanation as far as how they came up with the recommendation?
Support.
Yes, then support. Okay. Everybody understand the motion? Let's do a walkover. Oops. My computer shut down.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Bospis?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Commissioner Baker, you have a question?
Just for my own purpose of learning how things go, now, moving forward with any bid process, we have the authority to override any recommendation, or any, say, paperwork may not be right if a T's not crossed, or an I's not dotted.
The typical bid advertisement that the city lets, be it a bid that comes out of the clerk's office, or a bid that comes out of the engineering department, provides a notice to the bidders, and this is in the printed and published material, that the city reserves the right to waive all irregularities, and to award the business as it deems in the best interest of the city. And that's always been the case, always been the case. And you were asking, you know, how often is it, does it occur that irregularities are waived? You'd have to ask the city clerk and the city engineer how often they waive the irregularities. I can recall in the past that, that a bid has been presented to the city that had irregularities, and staff had recommended a waiver, but I, I don't have a sense for how frequently that may have ever occurred. But, but that's how we award bids, in the best interest of the city. And part of the award process includes a notice to the prospective bidders that there is a local bid preference, so that the bidders know that, that they may be low numerically, but, but a bidder, local bidder, that's close enough to their bid, will be offered the opportunity to match their low price and receive the bid. So, those are two provisions in our notices that we, that we put out to their bidders in the bid packages and through advertisements.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we already voted.
Thank you all of you for your consideration, right?
Yep. Thank you. You have some, you may now speak. If you'd like to come to the mic, please. Identify yourself, John, we appreciate it.
Those of you who don't know me, I'm John Seruk. I'm a city resident lifelong, and I sit with Carmen on the Cloverland Electric Board as two of your District B representatives. There's an old saying, if you're still friends with your contractor after he builds your house, you've got a real relationship. I just want to speak to about how I came to be such a good friend with Mr. Benacci. Twenty-seven years ago, I was president of, last president of Nativity Parish Council, and we had to do a re-roofing job, and Carmen's bid was less than half than the nearest one. And I've done a lot of bid work, and I've run a lot of specifications while at my job at Edison Sioux Electric, many jobs. And Carmen calls me on the phone, says we have a little problem, and I want to come up here. So, on my way up there, I'm thinking, oh, here we go, change order, and drip edge molding wasn't installed, and roofs had rotted along Y's. So, I think, well, how much is this going to cost me? Carmen says, you know what, you buy the material, we won't charge anything extra. That speaks to the integrity of the guy. I've had him on many jobs bid. His people work safely, very dangerous conditions. I had to redo the headgate roofs when the storm blew off, very dangerous work. And yet, Carmen, time and again, they work careful, they're conscientious, and they're low price. This whole question should come down to, does the level of the mistake in the paperwork warrant going to an outside bidder for more money? As a taxpayer, that's ridiculous. He's low bid, he's done good work over and over in this community, I don't know, what really upsets me, I went out and solicited, phoned three candidates to run for the board at Cloverland, because I thought we need to change some stuff, one of them being go to the open meetings. Carmen was one of the guys I recruited, and he's helped us, and we finally got a majority, and we're going to implement some changes that have long been needed there. Now, we listened to a presentation from Mr. Turner and Mayor Bospis regarding a fence along the canal. We didn't, we weren't supportive of that fence. I'm not going to spend $200,000 of the rate payer's money to do an ornamental fence along the canal walkway. People in the community told me over and over, they want Alfred Park fixed. That's a waterway. That's where people come to see the boats, where the people come to fish. The canal, I'm sorry, but I don't think that's a wise move, putting a walkway down there. I worked in that place, Carmen and I took a tour on a barge, looking at the work going on. We're nowhere near done with that project. There could be more mobilization going on, we're going to be going all the way up to the headgates. I think that was not well-founded, that idea to go ahead with that project. And just because an elected official votes against something, doesn't mean we're against Sioux St. Marie. We are very pro Sioux St. Marie. I'm pro Sioux St. Marie. And I resent my character, my integrity, being impugned on Facebook and elsewhere, because I oppose a project that some people take very personal. I don't question your integrity when you come out and say, we're for this. There's enough of that kind of politics going on in Lansing and Washington now, please don't bring it to this level. I'm, I'm really encouraged that some of the new young people we have here, I know you, and, and we need that new fresh blood and thinking, but whatever you do, don't take it personal when someone's against a project that you're for. They may have valid reasons for it, and I just can't help but think from some of the comments I've heard, there's a cobble of people in this community that when you cross them up, go against them, they'll come after you. And Carmen thinks this may have been the case here, and I think he may have a valid point. So, I really ask you to think over what I'm saying tonight, and I thank you young people for getting involved, because it's not easy, you can't make everybody happy. But look at the bottom line. Does it rise to the level that you're going to pay more money to an outside firm? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, item number, let's see, item number J, matters presented by the city commission. Just a comment about the 350th anniversary, the festival going on this coming week, on the 20th, 21st, 22nd. A lot of activity down on, on the Osborne, just to remind people that relatively inexpensive at $5 for those 16 and older, and three days of a lot of activity, and it's all on the city's website, and SUI Events, I believe, too. So, with that, Commissioner Gary?
I'd make a motion that we convene to the closed session and possibly reconvene from closed session after.
Support. All those in favor, say the "aye" by saying "aye."
Aye.
Both, same sign? Thank you. We will reconvene at the close of the closed session. Shane Riss?
Still on TV, hopefully.
Yeah. It's hard to say, yeah. After two hours, it might be, but, so we're, everybody's here. Uh, no. Oh, yes, she is. Couldn't see it. Okay, we're back in open session. Commissioner Miller?
Do we need a motion to reconvene and open? Are we just open?
I don't believe so.
No? Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. I move we authorize the city attorney to hire expert witnesses to assist the city attorney for the defense of the Meyer Goodwill Company Incorporated tax appeals, subject to city manager approval.
Support.
The move's supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.